Good morning. This is day two of the State Bar Board of Trustees meeting of September 2023. I would like to call the meeting to order and ask the Secretary for a roll call, please.
Buenaventura.
Present.
Chen.
Present.
Cisneros.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Huser. Shelby. Don't see trustee Shelby. Soell.
Present.
Stallings.
Present.
Tony.
Present.
Trejo.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Welcome. You will have noticed that there's a little bit of different configuration to the room today, and there's a man in a robe, which means that it's a very special day for the Board of Trustees, and in particular, the new leadership who's about to be sworn in. Ms. Huser, trustee Huser, welcome. Congratulations on your appointment to the Board. I'm sure we're gonna, we're gonna see great things from you. My name is Ruben Duran. I am, for the moment, the Chair of the State Bar Board of Trustees. That will change when Brandon Stallings is sworn in momentarily by Chief Presiding Justice, Brian Curry. It's my honor to introduce Justice Curry. I've had the pleasure of knowing him for a few years now through his great work with the Civility Task Force. I'm gonna introduce Justice Curry in a way that I think will give all of us around the room a taste of his incredible life of public service, and I think it speaks to the very momentous occasion that Brandon and Jose and Mary are about to undergo. He is a graduate of the University of California at Davis for undergrad, went to UVA, University of Virginia Law School, where he served on the Virginia Law Review. He then spent nearly thirty years at O'Melvyn &amp; Myers as a very accomplished litigator. Among his most high-profile cases were the Exxon Valdez criminal case. On the pro bono front, he served as counsel to the Christopher Commission here in Los Angeles, and after the Rodney King incident, which was, of course, a very significant time in our city's history, he was a member of the L.A. County Bar Association's Task Force on Criminal Justice Reform and secured a Supreme Court victory, allowing the U.S. Census to more accurately count traditionally underrepresented groups. In 2010, then Antonio Villarrosa, then Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, Antonio Villarrosa appointed him as counsel to the mayor and also later Deputy Mayor for Economic and Business Policy. In 2014, Governor Brown appointed him as a judge of the Los Angeles County Superior Court, where he served with distinction until he was appointed to the Court of Appeal in December of 2018. The Commission on Judicial Appointments unanimously confirmed that appointment after the Jenny Commission bestowed an exceptionally well-qualified rating, no surprise given his excellent work and his commitment to public service. In 2023, just recently, Governor Newsom elevated him to his current role as Presiding Justice of Division Four, again being unanimously confirmed by the Commission on Judicial Appointments with an exceptionally well-qualified rating. He has served as the sole representative of appellate justices on the Board and Executive Committee of the California Judges Association until very recently, just yesterday. The man just doesn't stop. He is also the liaison, or was the liaison, between the CGA Board and the CGAs appellate and civil committees. He is the Chair of, is that still, is still at active position?
Oh dang.
That's right. Of the Civility Task Force. Again, that's how Justice Curry and I had the good fortune to, I had the good fortune to meet and get to know him. He's been such a pleasure to work with, just down-to-earth and truly a great example for me as a lawyer, and I think for all Californians in terms of serving the communities where he lives and works. Thank you for that, that fine example, Justice Curry. We're gonna put you to work this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. I have the great honor of swearing in some new Board members and new officers for the coming term. Before I do that, it being Indigenous Peoples' Day, I think we should all take a moment to thank and recognize the Tongva people and other Native people who were here long before us. Okay, and let's turn to the oath of office. I think we're gonna do the trustees first. And let's have you find a mark here and stand behind it. Okay, I think you're gonna face it this way. Wanna scoot down a little bit? Yeah. Okay, so this is not a test, all right? But I've done this enough times. It's a little bit tricky sometimes. I'm gonna say these words, and you're gonna repeat them, all right? But here's the, here's the catch. When I say "state your name," don't say "state your name." Say your name, okay? That's what trips most people up, okay? Please raise your, raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a member of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar of California. Thank you and congratulations. And now our new Vice Chair, come step forward. Find a mark right there. Thank you very much. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jose Cisneros.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar of California. Thank you, congratulations. Now, Mr. Stallings. My good friend. All right. Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Brandon Stallings.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as Chair of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar of California. Thank you, congratulations. I think that's it for me. And please give another round of applause. Justice Curry, coming here on his day off, so we really appreciate it. Okay, do we need to set things back up real quick? We'll take a brief pause here.
On this side of this room, looking out at what is a wonderful sight of new leadership at the State Bar. I only wanted to take a couple of minutes to thank you and Jose for agreeing to take on this challenge. I know that you each bring to your new positions lifetimes of public service in your respective roles before you got on the board. And I can tell you that I personally relied on your insight, on your expertise, on your courage and your wisdom in the role that I served most recently at the State Bar. And I know that that is going to serve you and your colleagues on the board very well over the next year. The challenges certainly are many and remain, but your talents likewise are many and remain to be seen. So I wish you Godspeed. I wish everyone on the board strength and good luck. And I look forward to watching the continued reform that this agency undergoes under your leadership. I can tell you as a licensee of the State Bar of California, I have a lot of hope for a bright future for the entity, for the way that this agency will continue to serve and protect the public. And I offer my heartfelt thanks. I offer my full-fledged support. And if there's anything that I can ever do to assist, please don't hesitate to call.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Duran, thank you so much for your service. There's nothing more that we could add to what we said yesterday other than you will be missed. You are already missed, and Godspeed. Have a great weekend. Enjoy your retirement. Back to business. Moving on to Chair Report. So as this is my first Chair Report, I'd like to thank a couple of people, and I appreciate your indulgence. First of all, I'd like to thank the Supreme Court for appointing me to this position. It is not lost on me that Chief Justice Guerrero, who also hails from a rural county, is entrusting leadership of this agency to a government lawyer who hails from a rural area and a less-known area, a non-San Francisco or LA area, someone who graduated from a small California-registered law school. And I just wanted to thank you for your trust and confidence, and I look forward to working with you and your incredible staff to work toward protecting the public in the best way possible. I'd like to thank Justice Curry, hopefully he's still listening, for taking the time on your day off to swear us in. Your commitment to excellence in the profession is unmatched, and I thank you for your work that you did and continue to do on the Civility Commission. Your leadership in this area is having a real impact. I'd like to thank the Kern County District Attorney's Office and my boss Cindy Zimmer for allowing me the flexibility to serve in this capacity. As prosecutors, our job is to seek justice and to protect the public. I look forward to continuing to bring this mindset to my work here at the State Bar. I'd like to recognize the staff who makes the work at the State Bar possible. Moving forward into this new bar has taken a substantial amount of work, work that goes on behind-the-scenes, work that the Board of Trustees tries to recognize but we never can fully articulate. But it takes a substantial amount of work, visioneering, and grit to truly turn an agency around. The State Bar executive staff is an absolute pleasure to work with, and I look forward to working with you all in the coming year. Thank you to my Vice Chair, Jose Cisneros, for agreeing to step into this fun assignment and to help lead this organization. It's going to be a fun year. Thank you to all of the board for giving of yourself to better the profession, increase accountability, and your willingness to serve in the various committees and liaison roles that we'll discuss shortly. I'd like to thank my parents, who I think are listening in, for demonstrating to me the absolute necessity of public service. It was modeled to me through my parents serving in church, volunteering my father's chiropractic skills at substance abuse centers, and selflessly giving of your life to better those around you. I saw the grit and drive of my mother, and while she was no doubt tired from raising nine boys, yes, I'm the oldest of nine, so I'm used to dealing with a large crowd, she still had the time to help other moms and invest in the lives of those who needed help. I hope to be able to capture the heart of love that you have for each other and for others. I'd like to thank my in-laws who are here at the swearing-in. David, you took an interest in me as a law clerk, encouraged me to get involved in local bar service, and ultimately to take the leap of faith and run for election to get on the Board of Trustees. The confidence you showed in me helped to quiet the self-doubt and the question in the back of my mind of whether a homeschooler who went to this small law school could ever make a difference at the state level. Thank you as well for modeling what it looks like to be a community leader who always answers the phone and asks how you can help. To my mother-in-law Angie, thank you for your unwavering support and for providing childcare so we can take these time-consuming commitments on, and just for holding us all together. Thank you so much. To my beautiful wife Alexia, thank you for your sacrifice in allowing me to take on this new challenge. Seeing your leadership as Kern County Bar Association President gives me a model in which to address the challenges that the State Bar will face. I love you, and I'm so proud of you, and love the life that we have. To my daughter, who's sitting there in the back, I love you. You are the reason that I, along with every person on this board, you're the reason why we do what we do, to make this California better for the generation coming after us. When you come into my office, and I'm drafting an email or reviewing a report, and you ask, Daddy, are you working? Please know that when I, as well as any of the members of this committee, are working on stuff, that we're taking time away from our family, from our loved ones. We're taking time away to volunteer our time because we truly do care about this good, noble, and worthwhile work. When the news came out about my appointment, I usually hear two things: congratulations and, hey, what's the State Bar? What does the Board of Trustees do? And I've had the pleasure of explaining to many people what the State Bar does, the good, sometimes the bad, and sometimes the ugly. And when I explain the important work that we oversee, the conversation sometimes turns to what the State Bar used to look like and some of the crises that have shaped us as an organization. The adversity that this board and staff have worked through has made us more resilient, transparent, and a more excellent public agency. We have learned lessons that can only be learned by walking through fire, and I truly believe that we have emerged as a stronger and more purified group. We are humbled by the past, yet hopeful for the future. Much like the pursuit of happiness, and to paraphrase an author that I like, Arthur C. Brooks, "The pathway to public agency excellence is not a destination, but a direction." My commitment to you, to the public, and to our stakeholders is not that there won't be a new crisis or there won't be some trouble on the horizon, but rather that as a board and staff, we'll continue to strive in the direction of change that previous board leadership has set us on. I think back to former Chairs Dave Pasternak, Jim Fox, Jason Lee, Michael Colentuna, Alan Steinbrecker, and now Ruben Duran, and I'm grateful for the decisions, the hard decisions they made to change the trajectory of the bar towards reform and the challenges that they each faced during their tenure. As new challenges arise, and they will, as the reason why we have boards and very smart and accomplished people who serve on those boards, my commitment to you is that we will confront these new challenges, looking back on the lessons that we have learned, but also looking forward, knowing that this is a profession that is worthy of our work and dedication. A profession, while tarnished by some bad actors, produces incredible people who quite literally change the world. These professionals take on an enormous amount of stress to deal with society's most pressing and urgent issues. To the legal professionals, I would say, we see your struggle towards excellency. We stand ready to equip you with training that you need to be the best and most ethical lawyer you can be. We will continue to rebuild the public's lost confidence in our profession by having a fully funded discipline system. To our partners in the legislature and the governor's office, we welcome your support and interest in the steps that we have taken to regain the public's confidence. We also welcome the direction that has been given us in the latest fee bill to make that case for a fee increase for 2025. We appreciate the recognition that you have given us and the steps that we have taken to implement these changes, to implement these reforms, and we ask that we be fully funded so we can fully implement these things that have a true impact on public protection. I want to close my remarks out with a quote from the Civility Task Force Commission's final report authored by Justice Curry and Heather Rosin. I love this quote, and I really hope that it is our guiding light as we continue our work. "We are professionals. We are officers of the court. We are governed by the rules of professional conduct or the canons of ethics. We are not just vendors or suppliers who come into the court to do business. We are justice's lifeblood. The judicial system is not a collection of buildings; it's a collection of people and principles, and we have been entrusted with its safekeeping." So, hey, we're regulators of justice's lifeblood. No pressure, right? We have a lot of work to do. We have accomplished so much, and there is still so much to look forward to, and I am so thankful I'm on this trajectory towards excellence with you. So thank you, and let's have a great board year. And now I wish to hand it over to our Executive Director, Leah Wilson.
Just briefly, I'm going to do my Executive Director Report, which I did not do yesterday. I just want to call the board's attention to the attachment to the agenda item or the Executive Director Report that I posted. As you know, I don't typically do a written Executive Director Report, but this time I chose to as a vehicle for providing the board with an update on changes made to the case processing and operational metrics that you reviewed at your last meeting. Trustees Tony and Chen in particular asked for modifications to the metrics, and so those have been made, and you can see them in red in the attachment. So I'm not expecting necessarily any board discussion or feedback. If you have any, I would welcome it now or later, but as it stands, these are the metrics that we will be reporting on going forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any questions or comments from the board? All right, seeing none, let me actually take a step back to Chair's Report. As a portion of the Chair's Report, I did attach a list of committee assignments and liaison assignments, and I think there's a resolution to that effect. If we could put that up on the board? All right. Does anybody need a chance to review the attachment with the listings of the assignments?
Yeah, I haven't seen, I don't know where to find it.
All right, I'll give you a chance to review it here. And if you'll note, there are several open assignments. We do anticipate several new trustees being onboarded, hopefully in the near future, and we will make adjustments as we get the new talents from our appointing agencies.
If I could ask a question, only because it's the first time I've seen it and haven't been able to comment. My general comment is that if we have, how many trustees do we currently have?
We have 11.
11 as of today? Okay.
Or 10, I'm sorry.
10, okay. And the total is 13. A total complement is 13.
Correct.
My comment is, eight on an executive committee just seems like a lot. It almost seems like, well, why have an executive committee? Why not? That's just a comment that, you know, especially because part of what I think of executive committees, the function in an organization is to make quick decisions or to do things in the absence, and which is why often they're smaller than, you know. Anyway, just a thought. It's only a comment. It can be looked at later.
All right. Comment received, and we'll definitely look at that. All right, any questions or comments? I could have the resolution put back up on the board, please? All right, may I have a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
All right, we have a first by Trustee Buena Ventura, second by Vice Chair Cisneros. Can I have the roll call, please?
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
10 ayes, 0 nays. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar, I understand we're going to be pulling 50-1 from consent. Are there any other items that any member wishes to pull? Yes, Mr. Tony?
When you say 50-1, you mean all the items, or do you want us to identify items within 50-1? I'm asking what you're asking us to do.
I think that was my error. I didn't, I wasn't aware we could just pull one item. Where I think the request coming out of Audit Committee was to pull one contract out of that item. So if we're allowed to do that, then we will. And that is row...
Item 13, I believe?
Row 13. Yeah, item 13 within the agenda item.
So maybe if I could make a suggestion, if that item could be pulled, and you can vote on the consent agenda and then separately vote on that particular approval of specified contracts item with a removal of the auditor contract that was requested by the Audit Committee.
All right. So with that exception as articulated by General Counsel, do I have a motion then to approve the remaining consent items?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, first by Tony, second by Soell. Have the roll, please.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
10 ayes, 0 nays. Motion carries.
Moving on to item 60-1, I'm sorry, 60-2, we're going to be hopped around a little bit today. This is a report on random audit of Office of Chief Trial Counsel files, and we have Chief Trial Counsel George Cardona coming. This is for presentation and discussion only. So welcome, Mr. Cardona, on a Friday morning.
All right, so we've got some slides up. This is one of our regular periodic reports on the random audit of closed cases. So if we can go to the next slide. As a quick refresher, we do a random audit of files closed within every six-month period. They're reviewed by an independent outside auditor. The review is basically to see whether we have acted consistently with governing statutes, case law, and our own procedures and policies, and finally whether when we have made decisions to close, whether that's within the scope of ordinarily reasonable prosecutorial discretion. What the audit tries to do is identify for us policy issues, suggested changes in our policies or procedures, training issues where they identify things that they think we need to train our staff on, and then they suggest potentially corrective actions, including normally recommendations to reopen some numbers of cases. Our audit procedures were substantially modified last July and this February. That was done to address recommendations from the State Auditor in their April 2022 report. In large part, those dealt with revisions to ensure the independence of the audit, and so now both the independent auditors and the random selection of files are overseen not by OCTC but by the Mission Advancement and Accountability Division to ensure that it's not us overseeing the audit of our own files. We also modified the procedures based on lessons learned from Girardi and our review of 15-plus and 40-plus respondents, that is respondents who have certain numbers of prior complaints over time. And so there's now a particular portion of the audit that focuses on attorneys who have those numbers of complaints, and we'll see that when we go over what the case selection was. This particular audit is still a catch-up audit to try and make up for delays that were occasioned by COVID. So we're looking at cases that were closed or otherwise resolved from September 1st, 2021, to February 28th, 2022. We are trying to get back to the point where we will be auditing files more close in time to where we are now, but we're still doing that catch-up. This is the first one to use our full set of modified procedures. So basically, if we can go to the next slide, we select cases from each of our three stages, from intake, investigation, and charging. 86 from intake, 86 from investigation, 35 from charging, and then this year, for this audit, we added the new piece, which is looking at a group of respondents who have 15 or more prior complaints over five years. We randomly selected six attorneys who fit within that category, and then for each of those attorneys, selected randomly eight closed cases for the audit. And this is intended to try and make sure that we're addressing those individuals appropriately, taking into account their history of complaints. So the total is 255 closed cases that were audited. Next slide, please. Out of those 255 cases, after review, the auditor recommended that we reopen 12. We're in the process of reviewing those to determine whether we agree with the auditor's recommendations. Normally, we agree with those recommendations in most cases. This is one of our metrics. The 12 out of 255 is 4.7%. I've given you a graph there so that you can see how that compares with prior audits going back to 2018. Our target is 4.3%. So we were close, though slightly above, and you can see that typically we vary right around that target. If we can go to the next slide, these were some of the policy recommendations, policy or procedure recommendations that were made by the auditor. The first of these had to do with our transfer to remote work and difficulties that were faced by investigators making calls from their home numbers or from their cell phones to complainants or witnesses. A problem was that numbers were blocked, calls were very difficult to make, investigators didn't want to use their personal phones because they don't want complainants to have their personal numbers, and so there were issues with that. We have since solved that. IT has put on our computers Teams Voice, which allows calls to be placed from our laptops using our office numbers, and so that issue has effectively been resolved. There was also a note on inconsistent issuance of resource and warning letters. These are two letters, they're non-disciplinary resolutions that we use to resolve more minor violations. We've since taken a number of steps to address this already. In October of 2022, we issued a policy directive in response to the State Audit that laid out much more detailed criteria for when staff are supposed to use these types of non-public resolutions. That policy was not yet in place at the time of this audit. We've also formalized and formed a specialized client trust account and bank reportable action team. That's something that was done in July of this year. There was a pilot program that had that in place from late last year through July of this year. That team is one of the ones that issues probably the largest number of resource and warning letters because we now, per policy, issue resource letters, that is, letters that advise attorneys of resources that can assist them in their management of their client trust account in all bank reportable actions and all cases involving client trust accounts. So they too have specific guidance as to when they should issue those and when they should move forward with investigations, so that too addresses it. In another item that is on the agenda today, we're going to be implementing formal diversion guidelines that will also address this, and we plan to have, once the diversion guidelines are in place, plan to have a training for our office to emphasize what the new criteria are and how to take into account all of these different situations. So that will be addressed. The audit also noticed that there were inconsistencies in how we handled repeat respondents, that is attorneys who had multiple complaints, noting that in some instances, it appeared that one attorney who was handling a case hadn't consulted with another attorney who was handling another case against the same attorney. That was something that was also recognized by the State Audit in April of 2022, and of course, is one of the things that potentially led to Girardi. We have since taken a number of steps to address that with policies and procedures and training, which are outlined here. We're hoping that as we get to an audit that addresses cases that were handled after these policies, we'll get a better sense of whether those policies are working. Another issue that was pointed out was our handling when we close a case and then the complainant submits additional information. There were identified inconsistencies in how that information is handled. There was a recommendation that we adopt more formal procedures for that. We will consider that and look at our past procedures and likely will do revisions to make more clear how we're going to do that. Finally, there was a suggestion that we implement a more formal policy for handling complaints against individual OCTC staff members, that is, when a complainant submits a complaint, is unhappy with how it's handled, and submits a complaint against the attorney who handled the underlying disciplinary complaint. We will implement a more formal policy for ensuring what we already do, which is that those complaints are in fact assigned to someone other than that individual supervisor for review and handling to ensure that there's an independent consideration of those complaints. And we will, obviously in accordance with our procedures, report back to the board on our implementation of these new things as they're done. Finally, the audit made some training recommendations. Again, because this was a catch-up audit, if we can go to the next slide, some of these have already been done. So for example, they recommended training on the rule of limitations. We already provided that in October of last year. They recommended training on Odyssey procedures and documentation. We already provided that earlier this year. We are planning trainings on the other things that were identified, which are listed here, and will report back to the board if that training is completed. So next slide, I think that's it.
Mr. Cardona, thank you for that presentation. Any questions or comments by trustees? Mr. Buena Ventura?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Cardona, could you walk me through again what happens when a complaint is generated to the point where it's actually closed? So let's say, what I'm interested in is, once a complaint's generated, I'm assuming it goes to some kind of intake, and then it goes to an attorney, and then maybe an investigator, and then maybe it's closed. So some of the things I was wondering is, who makes that early determination? Is it an intake person that's not an attorney? And then is there any investigation done other than just that intake or attorney? When does it go to an investigator? And then when you say that the case is closed, how do you calculate how many days are spent with the case being open? In other words, if nothing is being done during like waiting period or something like that, is that calculated as a day that it's open and something's being done on the case?
Sure, so I'll answer the last question last, first. So we count time from the date that we receive the complaint, which now that we have the online portal, most of our complaints are received the same day they're submitted. So that's the start point, and then we count all time from that point in time until the case is either closed, i.e. we make the decision to close and issue the closing letter to the complaining witness, or we file charges in the State Bar Court. All of that time is counted, even if the case is dormant. There are some situations in which we will abate a case, in other words, in which we will say we are going to stop working on this case pending, for example, a parallel civil proceeding that we believe is going to actually resolve most of the issues, so we will issue abatement decisions internally. If the case is abated during that time period, we don't count that time.
Okay.
In terms of the review of complaints, so a complaint comes into us, it's initially processed and sent to our intake group. It then undergoes a review by attorneys, so our intake divisions are attorneys. They do the initial review of the complaint to make a decision whether the complaint states on its face... on its face a disciplinary violation that potentially has the potential for resulting in discipline. So that's the very low standard that's applied there. Once those attorneys complete that review, and that review may include additional conversations or letters to the complaining witness, asking for additional information, once that review is done, they'll make that decision. They either close the complaint if they believe it doesn't meet that standard, or they'll pass it along to investigation. Once it gets to investigation, it's assigned to both an investigator and an attorney who acts as a legal advisor for the investigation, and then we engage in the investigatory steps. Those investigatory steps can include issuing subpoenas for documents, issuing requests for documents, and by statute, it includes us reaching out to the attorney and asking for their response to the allegations. And so that investigation will be done. It can also include witness interviews, depositions, et cetera. That investigation is then done, and at various stages during that, the decision can be made either to close it or to move it forward to charging. Our charging stage is then typically overseen primarily by attorneys, who then review the materials and prepare the charging instrument and/or reach out to the attorney and engage in settlement negotiations to see if they can resolve the case short of charges. And then, once charges, if we get to charging, then the charges are filed in State Bar Court. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? Yes, trustee Solow.
Just real quick, George, you mentioned that this is a catch-up audit. When do you think we're going to be caught up?
So we now have multiple auditors who are working to try and catch us up. I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that within the next six to nine months, we'll get caught up and be back on a schedule where we're auditing basically, you know, three or six months behind current time. I hope. But again, that's now overseen by MAD in terms of retaining the auditors and getting them on board.
All right. Thank you, George. I think this really does highlight some of the important work that we're doing to make sure that there's a second set of eyes on cases and that staff is continuing to learn from the various things that these auditors are pulling out. So keep up the good work. I appreciate the update.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to, I think we have Mr. Moad for this next item. This is item 60-3, Proposed Amendments to California Rules of Court relating to the regulatory function of the State Bar. This is a return from public comment and a request for adoption. Good morning, Mr. Moad.
Good morning, Chair Stallings. Nice to see everybody. So I will not spend much time on this agenda item. I do have three points to make. First, given the status of the general fund, staff does not recommend moving forward the proposed changes to Rule 2.16 regarding fee waivers forward, so that was pulled from this agenda item. It's not included in the agenda item at this time. It's something that we would bring forward at another time in the future, hopefully, pending the general fund issues. Another point I wanted to make is that new rule of Court 9.8.1 has also been removed from this item. The board approved sending it out for a 60-day public comment period at the May 2023 meeting. While that rule was included in the public comment request and on the website, there was, it was not explicitly called out in the dropdown for people to provide comment. It's not that they couldn't provide comment, it's just that it wasn't specifically in the dropdown list, and so that may have created some confusion, and so we instead sent it back out for another 60-day public comment period. So that's not in there either. I anticipate that will be back before the board at the November board meeting. And lastly, the public comment was almost entirely positive, with the exception of one commenter who mistakenly believed that the changes applied to the rules of professional conduct and not to the rules of the State Bar, and so they were confused as to, you know, there is no Rule 2.2, for example, because there isn't in certain, in the rules of professional conduct, but there are in the rules of the State Bar. So those are my comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moad. Any questions, comments? All right, seeing none, if we could have the resolutions, and there are many of them?
There are many of them. I apologize. Some of them are because the timing of the rules, some of the rules of the State Bar need to be effective upon the effective date of certain rules of court that need to be approved by the Supreme Court. So that's why there's so many.
If I could ask a question?
Yes, trustee.
Are the modifications that, you know, that were talked about, are they already included in the resolution in front of us, so we don't have to make any modifications? Is that correct?
That's my understanding correct.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure.
That's correct. Yeah, the two rules that were pulled from the agenda item were pulled entirely.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does any trustee wish to review these resolutions any further, or may I have a motion as to the full menu?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, first by trustee Goode, second by trustee Buena Ventura. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Solow?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Ten I's, zero N's, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moad, for your excellent work. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right, moving on to item 60-4, this is the Annual Discipline Report Review and Approval Timeline. We have Ms. Yang reporting out to us, so good morning. Ma'am, if you could just turn your microphone on, pull it closer.
Good.
There we go, much better.
Okay, thanks. This is about annual discipline report for the newer board members. I think it's important to understand, this is one of the most important documents that the State Bar produces every year. If you scroll down to the bottom of the agenda item, you can see the list of people that we distribute this report to. That includes, that include the governor's office, the chief justice, and the legislature. So that's some background about this annual discipline report. Then, for this agenda item, we ask you to review the procedures of compiling this report. This was recommended by the state auditor. They want the board to be involved in approving the procedures of compiling this report for the purpose of ensure consistency, transparency, and accuracy of the data. This procedure was approved last year. We just want to share that we did not make any modification of the process, again, to ensure consistency of data reporting. Then, the last point I want to highlight is, we did, we now propose to add a component in the narrative. So in this report, if you look at page two, if you want, take a quick look at the report we produced last year, and you can see there are mainly two parts. One is all the statutorily required tables, no change there, we will just update the numbers. Then the narratives, we have, we propose no change, no, you know, the same figures, same tables, but we propose to add one component, which is demographic data of disciplined attorneys. And we would love to hear your feedback on, you know, whether we should add this, to add the data to this year's report. We shared a few minor concerns, but we do think it is consistent with our strategic plan, with our fundamental principle to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, but, but if you have any concern, you can share with us. That's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Yes.
Yeah, just to make sure or clarify for the board, so this would be the first time that we included demographic data in the ADR. Once we do this, I think we need to commit to doing it going forward, regardless of if the data is sort of favorable to the State Bar or not. And as Yuen indicated, I believe this is consistent with our strategic plan and as well as our organizational values in this area, but did want to get the board's thoughts because it would be something quite new for us to do. And we would, once again, think be on the forefront in this space, just as we were with the racial disparities in discipline study. I'm not aware of any other licensing agency in any sector that is providing data with demographic breakdown.
And just to echo Leah's comments, we certainly heard that on the ad hoc commission review of the justice system, where members from other bar associations were commenting and highly favorable of the State Bar's work in this space. So just want to highlight that. Yes, trustee Shelby?
Yes. When you say demographic data, what does that entail?
That entails gender and race, ethnicity, distribution among the disciplined attorneys.
Thank you.
Trustee Goode.
Is that EEOC demographic categories or some other categories?
We actually prepared the sort of shared table for the board, if you want to take a look, you know, what categories we will report.
The categories, though, trustee Goode, are consistent with those that we report out in the annual discipline report, I mean, not the annual discipline, the annual diversity report card. So I don't, I believe that we have more nuance and expansive set of categories than the EEOC, but I'm not certain of that.
We do. I know that for a fact.
Okay.
Yeah. I just wanted to say, I think this is an excellent move. I think it's imperative that we track this kind of information based upon the work that Professor Farkas and Professors Robertson did, and the work of the ad hoc commission on the discipline system. So I, for one, welcome this and think it's a fantastic addition. So thank you.
All right, trustee Tony.
I'd like to join the earlier comments and say that tracking the demographics will give us very valuable information. And one of the things that will help us figure out is how we are, you know, what's our progress towards equity, towards race equity. And, you know, my, my main concern with the ad hoc commission's presumption is that the disparities identified in the Farkas report, which is based on data that is now, I don't know, eight to 10 years old, at least, you know, the data set they used. And, you know, and then, once the report came out, of all the publicity, I cannot imagine but that the State Bar Courts and the Chief Trow Counsel's Office hasn't been much more thoughtful about how to, in their processing, address these disparities. And I would expect that, I would hope that we would see some improvement because we need to have more current data to be able to help us guide good policy decisions and not simply rely on data that, quite frankly, gets, is dated. So I really support this. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, trustee Tony. It will be interesting to see how the steps that the State Bar has taken to incorporate Professor Robertson's recommendations. I mean, just to name a few, the sending, sending the letters, the resource letters out to litigants, advising them that it's, it's a highly, it's a good idea to have representation. I mean, that's a big one that I know that we, that we really worked on, self-help from the State Bar Court. Many, it's not one, one solution, but many, hopefully, things coming together to, in our search for that. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right. There's no resolution, though, for this, correct?
We do.
We do have a resolution?
We do.
If we could put that up?
Yeah.
So I want to explain the first one a little bit. So we will reach out to the board to schedule a special board meeting, as what we did last year. That board meeting, we will present the main results of this year's annual discipline report, so that will be scheduled. That's the first resolution there.
All right. All right, trustees, may I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, first by trustee Goode, second by trustee Solow. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Solow?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Ten I's, zero N's, motion carries.
Ms. Yang, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Going to item 60-5, this is a discussion regarding State Bar diversion program. This is discussion and presentation only, and I think, George, you're joined by a cadre of other well-qualified individuals. Maybe.
Who I hope will pop up. Maybe. If not, I'll go through it. So we do have some slides. Ah, excellent.
Good morning, Ms. Lawrence.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I can start working through the slides while we're waiting, if we can go to the next one. So SB 40, as passed by the Assembly and now waiting for signature by the Governor, adds a new Business and Professions Code, Section 6086.20, which has two, for our purposes, for this presentation, relevant provisions. First, effective January 1st, 2025, it eliminates private approvals, and we will move to a system where we just have public approvals. That means that all discipline will be public. And second, on or before April 1st, 2024, the board is required to provide recommendations for codifying a formal diversion program for attorneys accused of minor violations. So what I want to talk about here is some of the things we already do that are diversion, some of the new things that we're adding to move to a formal diversion program, kind of as a pilot, to provide information to the board, so that you'll have some information on which you can assess what recommendations to include in that report. So if we can move to the next slide, we already do a number of things that are diversionary. In the pre-complaint stage, we already make available for complainants who have what are really fee disputes as opposed to disciplinary complaints, mandatory fee arbitration, which is overseen by Melanie's group, and she can talk a little bit about that if you have questions. Moving to the disciplinary system, once a complaint is filed, we can refer those complaints that seem, appear to us to primarily be fee disputes out to mandatory fee arbitration. And in the intake stage, we deal with certain types of complaints, those that primarily seek return of a file or are complaining about a lack of communication. We often will try and deal with those in a non-disciplinary way through directional letters, directing an attorney within a specified time to return the file or resume communications. When we move to investigation and charging, we have other things available. We can still do those things if it turns out after investigation that that's appropriate. We also can issue a series of non-disciplinary resolutions, warning letters, admonition letters, and agreements in lieu of discipline, all of which are essentially a form of diversion in that we are saying typically, we will not proceed with charges if you, attorney, do something, typically attend ethics school, attend client trust accounting school, make restitution, make any other reimbursements to the client, and/or do certain things to resolve and address the underlying conduct. Those are all forms of diversion that we currently do. If we can go to the next slide, additional diversion programs that are in the works in the Office of Professional Support and Client Protection, they are contemplating and considering adding a voluntary mediation component to the mandatory fee arbitration program, which would, again, component to the mandatory fee arbitration program, which would again, hopefully provide more mechanisms that would encourage more people to address fee disputes without filing a disciplinary complaint and divert them out of the system at that early stage. We get a large number of complaints that actually are more complaints about fees that we have to process and handle. This would be a way to take those out more quickly, hopefully. The Public Trust Liaison is looking at a new complaint diversion program that would provide essentially the equivalent of our directional letters. They would work with individuals who have issues with file return and communications. Prior to filing a disciplinary complaint, providing an avenue for individuals who, for whatever reason, would prefer to resolve it informally and not file a disciplinary complaint. The hope, based on looking at some numbers, is that that would take another three hundred to five hundred complainants who would choose to resolve it in that informal way rather than filing a formal disciplinary complaint. And finally, in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, we are going to be implementing as a pilot a formal diversion program that kind of formalizes criteria for when individuals will be given an opportunity to enter into a diversion agreement, an agreement with our office to perform certain things, comply with certain conditions in return for which we would agree not to further investigate, not to charge a disciplinary violation. Based on the numbers, our goal would be, hopefully as a result of this diversion program, to take somewhere between ten to twenty percent of our disciplinary complaints and resolve them through the diversion program, again, with hopefully a net savings in resources to the extent we can resolve these more quickly at an earlier stage of the process. For appropriate individuals, and we'll be looking at a number of criteria, but those criteria will include, obviously, the nature of the underlying allegations, in other words, the seriousness of the conduct alleged, as well as their prior history in term, in the disciplinary process. So that's what we are hoping to put in place with that. If we can go to the next slide. This next slide then shows with the addition of those contemplated programs where we would be. We would have more opportunities for diverting complaints prior to the complaint, in other words, dealing more informally than in the formal disciplinary system. We'd add at the intake stage, pre-investigation diversion with certain criteria for when that would occur, and we would formalize our post-investigation diversion, our conditional closures. So this is the goal of the diversion program. If we can go to the next slide. In terms of staffing and costs, the Office of Professional Support and Client Protection is in the middle of doing a review of the mandatory fee arbitration program. That review includes their exploration of the fee structure for the addition of a mediation component. Public Trust Liaison does not currently have staff available to implement their program. We are considering loaning them one staff member to try and get this up and running, at least as a pilot, so we can see what the implementation will be, and we will likely do that. For us, in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, we're planning on using existing resources for the initial implementation. I mean, in particular, one of the pieces that we don't currently have a good handle on is monitoring compliance with the conditions. So we're going to enter into diversion agreements, require attorneys to comply with certain conditions. We need to formalize that monitoring system, and right now, we're planning on trying to take two of our paralegals and make that a significant chunk of their duties to do that monitoring. And see if we can work that with our current staff. As the program is implemented, obviously, part of that will be assessing, you know, how successful it is, how many cases it takes, and what the staffing needs would be going forward if it is successful to fully implement it and make it broader and accommodate the number of cases we think are appropriate. If we can go to the next slide. In terms of the April first, twenty twenty-four report, we're going to try and put this in place. Our goal is to have our diversion program in OCTC up and running November first so that we can have data from November through at least February, potentially March, in terms of the numbers of cases we identify as diversion eligible, how many actually get resolved through diversion, some assessment of staffing needs and costs, and we will then present some recommendations regarding codification so that the board will have those and consider those in connection with the report. So that is the plan, moving forward from here towards the April twenty twenty-four report in terms of diversion. And with that, if there are questions, I can try and answer them, or Melanie and Enrique can answer for the pieces that relate to their sections.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cardona, and welcome, Mr. Zuniga. Do we have any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Buena Ventura?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So just using as a model in the criminal world context, we have things that are, one is this thing called pre plea diversion, and another one is post plea diversion. And so with pre plea diversion, you don't have to admit to any conduct, you just go in there and you get the diversion. With post plea, you have to actually admit to the conduct, and then if you complete the program, then that case is basically dismissed. However, if you don't complete the program, your admission to the misconduct is already there, and you can't withdraw that sort of plea. So I guess my question is, in your model of a diversionary program, does it require the, the person who committed the misconduct to actually admit that at any time before he's placed on diversion?
No, for our diversion program, the only thing where we require people to admit, I believe, is our agreements in lieu of discipline, where we require people to sign off on the fact that there's been some conduct. But the majority of our diversion, what we're contemplating as part of our formal diversion program, would be the equivalent of pre plea diversion. We wouldn't require admissions as a condition of entering into that diversion.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Tony?
Thank you. I like this a great deal, and I think, George, you're being very responsive to the legislature. And I have a couple of questions on it. One is just an understanding of pre complaint. Like, how do you know someone has a complaint before they give it to you? I don't, I'm just, I, I, just help me understand what this?
We wouldn't, but for example, the Public Trust Liaison's office frequently fields calls from individuals who are calling them before filing a disciplinary complaint to say, hey, my attorney is doing X, what can I do about this? And this would provide them with a mechanism for addressing that and providing the potential complainant with a way to address it without the need to file a disciplinary complaint.
What I really like about that is that it's basically early resolution. It's an early resolution because, you know, you know, you're pitching to people, look, you can file a formal complaint and wait, it may take a little while, or we can help you resolve this and, you know, try to get you satisfaction in the next week or two, right? That's, is that the kind of concept of this?
I'll let Enrique speak.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Please, Enrique.
Good morning, Mr. Tony. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, this program, like a lot of the programs, was born out of necessity. I've been in this position for approximately nine months, and we have fielded a lot of members of the public that are reluctant to file a complaint or hesitant. They're not necessarily unsatisfied with the representation, they just, for example, want their file back. It's very common for people to say, you know, he was a great attorney, I just want my file back, I don't want to file a complaint. So there is a lot of people that would like to receive some type of resolution without initiating the complaint process and being labeled as a complaining witness. There's other examples where the representation is very lengthy, and the complaining, I'm sorry, the member of the public says, hey, he's a great attorney, I just want him to resume communication and let me know what's going on, I don't want to complain against him, I just want him to reestablish communication. So that's what this is for, to handle those problems before or without filing a complaint.
And I think, Trustee Tony, in terms of the timeframe of the response, as George indicated, we're hoping he's going to allow the transfer on a pilot basis of a, of one FTE, and the estimate is about three hundred to five hundred of these kind of cases a year. So I think that workload and the FTE level will dictate the timeliness, but the goal is, I know I'm talking with Enrique, to have very rapid response.
And importantly, we would still track these informal resolutions so that if we did see an attorney who was a repeat player in the informal resolutions, in other words, multiple issues in dealing with this, we would have a record of that and could bear that in mind in making decisions on this player complaints.
Excellent, excellent. So the, the, the second part of this is, so let's say you get a complaint that's actually filed, and it is, you know, my, my attorney won't give me my files back, or I don't know how to get it back. Are you then able to, would you put it back to, or just?
No, we wouldn't. Once we get a formal disciplinary complaint, we're obligated to deal with that as a disciplinary complaint. But we would have an equivalent program in terms of issuing or entering into an agreement with the attorney where they would agree to return the file within a specified time, and we would agree that if they do that, we would close their complaint. In other words, it wouldn't proceed any further.
Great, great. And my last question is, on the first page, you did, you know, summarize the, that there won't be any private approvals, you know, pursuant to SB forty. It says commencing January one, twenty twenty-five, which I know is in the language. But, but I'm wondering, like, are you planning to continue to issue them up until January twenty twenty-five, or are you planning to say, you know what, we're just going to stop doing it because that clearly is the, you know, the direction they want to go? And, you know, might that be part of your April one, twenty twenty-four report?
We already do an incredibly small number of private approvals.
Right.
We will obviously bear in mind the legislative intent, but I don't want to rule out the possibility that there might be a situation in which we conclude that it's appropriate to have discipline on the attorney's record that nevertheless is private, which is essentially what a private approval is.
Right.
So a private, non-public approval gives us the opportunity to have a prior discipline, which can have impacts down the road in terms of subsequent discipline. In other words, one of the factors in determining the level of discipline in subsequent actions is whether there's been a prior discipline. So there may be instances in which we believe that it's appropriate to do that. Those are already rare, and I would expect that they would still be rarer as we move forward towards January first, twenty twenty-five. But given the continued existence of that as an option, I don't want to completely foreclose ourselves from taking advantage of that option if we believe that's the best way to proceed.
Okay. I, I appreciate your clarity and candor in responding. My only request is that you would think some more about it and that we can discuss it at our next liaison meeting a little bit more.
I look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Trustee Soell.
George, I'm trying to understand the implementation process here because the, the language in the, in the fee bill just says, make some recommendations to us about codifying a diversion program. Does that mean, and I just wonder, in terms of the timing of the implementation, I mean, we don't necessarily have to, you know, to wait to get all this codified to do it.
No, and we're not waiting. We're planning on implementing our diversion program November first. The goal would be to implement it November first in part so that we can see how it works and make more informed recommendations to you as to what you recommend to the legislature in terms of codifying diversion in statute. In other words, I think what the legislature is looking for is guidance from the board as to what they should put in a statute that would require implementation of certain diversion programs. And obviously, you know, that's of interest to us in terms of what's in the statute because we want to make sure that whatever goes in the statute meshes with what we think is the best way of implementing a diversion program, and hopefully the kind of early implementation as of November first will give us more data and information that we can come back and make those judgment calls.
Understood, thank you for that. George, is, so when it, when the program is implemented on the first of November, is this only new cases that are coming into the, into the pipeline, or does it reach back into anything that may be in the backlog or what?
So we, I think our plan would be to implement it for any case that is currently in our system. So in other words, if we have a complaint, even if that complaint was filed prior to November first, if we believe that that pending complaint meshes with our criteria for diversion, we would have the ability to make them the offer for diversion.
I just wanted to make one comment related to the April report. Also in April, as you know, we have a report due with respect to our twenty twenty-five funding needs and really our advocacy piece around a fee increase for twenty twenty-five. So this preliminary work to implement and outline the parameters of a diversion program will be instructive for that report as well. You may recall in our original articulation of a hundred and seven dollar funding need, there was a component there related to diversion efforts. But by implementing this kind of approach that's outlined here, at least portions of it, in advance of our April twenty twenty-four fee increase report, we can make sure that the number that we put in associated with funding diversion programs is in fact accurate.
Trustee Trejo?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I, I just have a question regarding what, what the outreach to the affected communities might be. I know we may have met, we may have spoken a little bit through the liaison's office before, but these are topics that some communities might find combative, and they might be slightly intimidated, intimidated by the formality of the process and these things. I was just curious, how is outreach being handled with different communities?
So I think that's something we'll have to talk about. Enrique does a lot of outreach through the Public Trust Liaison Office in terms of advising of new programs. We obviously will reach out to the Association of Disciplinary Defense Council to let them know that we're implementing this program in advance so that they can spread the word amongst their members who have contacts with a lot of attorneys, attorneys from a variety of different communities. In terms of other outreach, I anticipate that we'll probably post something on our website to put up notice of this.
I just think it's letting people know the resources that are available to them is just absolutely essential. And I know, again, I always think to my parents and their interactions with the legal world and how daunting that could be, even to your point, just to ask for their case file. So that's just something I'm sensitive to, and I always wanted to kind of make that known.
All right, any other questions? I think this is an exciting time for the bar to really step forward into a lot of the, you know, the issues that we've been talking about. I can think back several years to when we started talking about diversion programs and just really how they can be an effective form of discipline. So thank you for this, your work in this. I know you've received a lot of comments. Does staff require any other direction from the board at this point?
For OCTC, we're fine. I'll turn to Melanie and Enrique.
No, nothing here, thank you.
All right. Ms. Lawrence, Mr. Zuniga, thank you so much for your time. Mr. Cardona, as always, appreciate it. All right, moving on to item sixty, sixty zero six. This is Complaint Review Unit Overview and Recent Process Improvements. This will be presented by General Counsel Daftein and Chris Andreessen from OGC. This is a discussion and presentation only, so welcome.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the board. Luisa, is Carissa joining? Okay, thank you. So this is just a high-level presentation to the board about the complaint review process. It has been a while since you've heard an update, so, and we moved this item from the last board, board meeting to accommodate other priority items. So without further ado, let me turn over the presentation to Carissa Anderson, who is an attorney within Office of General Counsel, and she's the lead supervisor over our complaint review unit. Go ahead, Carissa.
Thanks, Alene. If we could just skip forward two slides? Thank you. So like Alene said, I'm just going to give you a high-level overview of what the complaint review unit process is. We tend to just call it CREW for short, and essentially, it's a second-level review or something akin to an appeal. of disciplinary complaints that were closed without the imposition of any type of discipline. And these we conduct at the request of a complainant. So it's offered to every complainant, and it's, of course, their option whether they actually seek that review. At a high level, as part of CREW's review, we can recommend that OCTC reopen a complaint for further investigation based on a finding that the complainant presented significant new evidence or we find other good cause. Alternatively, the other outcome would be that we determine that the complaint should remain closed. And in that event, the complainant does have an entitlement to seek further review with the California Supreme Court. So that process is explained to them in the letter of CREW's determination. And if they choose to do that, they can file an accusation with the California Supreme Court, which we here at the bar refer to as a Walker petition. Next slide, please. This slide is just here for reference. And the State Bar Rules of Procedure 2603B lays out the authority to put the complaint review unit within the Office of General Counsel. So what CREW looks like within OGC. We currently utilize five of our Assistant General Counsels to perform CREW work essentially as a percentage of their workload. In the past, the work was distributed among nearly all OGC attorneys, sort of with an expectation that they resolve a certain number of matters each particular month. And in the past, we needed to adjust this model after a few things happened. This is several years back. We had multiple OGC vacancies. And then we also saw a significant increase in the number of requests for reviews that we were receiving each month. And as a result of that, we had a decline in CREW's case clearance rate. And the result is what we're facing now, which is a fairly significant backlog of pending requests for review. Next slide. So to change the model that we had in the past and due to our staffing issues, in October of last year, 2022, we had started utilizing contract attorneys who were performing this work exclusively, 100% of their workload. And from this data table, you can see that in the months that we were utilizing the contract attorneys, we did start to see a decline in our caseload, an increase in our case resolutions, and a decrease in our disposition times. So unfortunately, as of June 30, we did not have funding to maintain that level of resources to continue using the contract attorneys. Next slide. So what we're seeing now is, on average, we are receiving more new requests for review each month than we're able to resolve. If you look here, the blue line shows requests received, and the green line shows the requests resolved. Currently, because we're without the funding for additional staffing, as of the beginning of this month, September, CREW is currently staffed at the equivalent of about two and a half or three full-time employees. And that's through utilizing Assistant General Counsels, three of whom work CREW matters as 50% of their workload, two at 25% of their workload. And then the remaining seven Assistant General Counsels can perform the CREW work as their other workload allows. We also are utilizing currently just one part-time contract attorney. And so with all those resources together, we have about two and a half or three employee equivalents. And so what we are seeing is that the CREW backlog is increasing as well as our disposition times. So with that, sort of where we're headed is we had a set of organizational goals that we've been working on over the last year. And so we just wanted to share some recent steps that we've made. Next slide. So the first is a CREW backlog reduction plan. And this is sort of what we're looking at. As of July 31, we have a current caseload of 1,020. As I mentioned, the current staffing is two and a half to three employee equivalents. So our projection is that at that level of staffing, we could resolve 60 to 70 requests each month. If you look at column two, what we're receiving each month is approximately an average of 122 new requests each month. So at our current staffing, we can't even resolve the new ones that we're receiving. So column two would be, how do we maintain the current caseload, which would be to resolve all the new requests that we receive each month? Our projected need would be five full-time employees dedicated to CREW or the equivalent of. The third column would be, how do we reduce the backlog? And if we wanted to reduce it 50% over the course of the next 12 months, our projected need would be nearly seven full-time employees to get that backlog reduction. This slide's really just a visual. It's probably not entirely accurate. But at our current staffing, our backlog is essentially going to increase by an additional approximately 60 cases each month. And so with our current staffing, it's going to continue to grow as well as our disposition times. And so all that is to say is that our CREW backlog reduction plan, as well as trying to meet our updated metrics, would not be feasible until we have additional staffing. So then, moving on to some of our other goals that we've been working towards, we've made a number of public-facing improvements, including adding publicly available information to the State Bar's website about the complaint review process, as well as offering complainants an auto reply response to any emails, which is really just intended to be informative. It provides information about the CREW process as well as answers to our most frequently asked questions. We've made improvements to the CREW intake process, including procedures for receiving requests for an extension of the window to seek review as well as requests to expedite review. And one additional item is we're planning to explore ways to receive submission of requests for review online. Currently, we only accept them via email or US mail. An additional thing we have done is we're working with the Office of the Public Trust Liaison and the Contact Center in order to provide faster responses to phone call inquiries concerning CREW matters. And then we also implemented two recent policy directives regarding conflicts of interest and ethical screens, which mirror similar policies within OCTC. And so the policies outline the procedures that would be required in any matter where a potential conflict of interest is identified. And then the last thing we're working on would be case processing standards. Under Rule 2603, there are no case processing standards included. So we're working with Mission Advancement and Accountability to develop some informed case processing standards, which, as I mentioned before, would not really be feasible until our backlog is reduced. And next slide. So the next four slides are really just a preview of the dashboard that Mission Advancement and Accountability has been developing. This is modeled off of the dashboard that the board receives on OCTC case processing. And so this is still in the development stage, but would be finalized soon. This slide presents requests received, resolved, case clearance rate, and disposition time, going back to 2019, and presenting quarterly data. Next slide. Also quarterly, just shows our inventory by age. You can see that that's been growing. And the next two slides present the data in a monthly format, which is how CREW has been reporting our data. But under the new dashboard, it should be likely presented quarterly the way OCTC does. So that's our high-level overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the CREW process or any of the changes that we've been implementing.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Andreessen. Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, Trustee Trejo.
So thank you very much for the presentation. I think that when, you know, we're so often focused on the cuts we have to make and the fiscal issues that we have, that rarely am I presented with something that so clearly shows the need for this organization's continued growth, right? I think that this is an example of a program that is important that because it's not adequately funded, is only going to continuously to get into a further and further hole, right? So just, we have to think about the importance of fee increases and being able to maintain an organization that needs to be fulfilling this as its goal. You know, so it sounds to me that irrespective of the great ideas that we're coming up with, with the great measures that we're going to do the most for the people we serve, that until we accept the reality that with all the cuss-cutting measures that we're doing, there's also a need to increase fees, we're going to be perpetually doing this to a lot of the different components of our organization. So I think that this was just a very clear, and there's one graph where we're just clearly going further and further in a hole here because we're understaffed. So it's not from lack of want or ability. It's just, we need help. And I think that this is just a glaring example of that.
Well said. Yes, Trustee Good.
I just had a question. On the chart about requests received, you know, there's this huge uptick in Q3 2019. Just wondering what that's all about. I have some guesses. And then also, I've noticed, you know, since Q2 2022, there's also kind of been an overall uptick. And I'm wondering if that's linked to more outreach to the public or, you know, what the explanation might be. So I'd be curious in that. And I also appreciate Trustee Trejo's comments and completely concur as well. Thank you.
Yeah, those are good questions. The 2019 uptick is sort of an interesting one where we happen to have a individual complainant who was submitting hundreds, hundreds of complaints to OCTC, which were then filtering over into CREW. So that's a bit of an anomaly. But what you noticed in later months actually is, we've identified it was a result of the CREW request process being made available via email for several years. It was sort of a hard copy mail thing where we were accepting them. And then when we started including in OCTC's closing letter the option to submit those requests via email to a general CREW email box, we did see a significant increase in the number of requests that were being submitted.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right. If there are none, thank you to our Office of General Counsel for taking up this and continuing this important work and to highlight Trustee Trejo's words that we need to support this work. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Going to item 700. This is the approval of 2024 admission fee increase and fee-setting policy. This will be presented by Ms. Hershkovitz and Ms. Montoya Chico. So if I could have you come up, I understand that this is a presentation and that there's potentially going to be a request to send portions of this out for further comment. But I look forward to the presentation.
Luisa, if you can put up the PowerPoint. So I think Trustee Trejo sort of left us off at a very apropos, with an apropos statement at the end of the last item, talking about the need to increase fees to fund our operations. Next slide. So for nearly 18 months, over the course of multiple meetings, we have teed up for you, discussed with you, and received direction from the board on the condition of the admissions fund and the fact that we are past due to consider fee increases for admissions-related fees that are needed to support the work of admissions. And the need that we do have to increase fees in a way that not everyone is comfortable with, all of us, I think, included, but the need to increase fees to stabilize the admissions fund and put it in a good condition. I'm going to turn this over to Ariselli in just a moment. But before I do, I wanted to provide you with two quick reminders about the condition of the admissions fund. First, the admissions functions that are performed by the State Bar include things such as administering two bar exams per year to over 10,000 applicants, administering two first-year law students' exams each year, operating the provisional licensure program, which Trustee Chen and Trustee Duran mentioned yesterday is one of their babies that they created, assessing each year about 6,000 applicants to determine if they possess the requisite character and fitness to be admitted to the bar, accrediting and regulating law schools, operating our special admissions programs, and more. These functions, including, of course, compensation for the staff who operate these functions, are funded entirely out of the fees that we receive, the fees that are charged for these functions. There is no additional source of revenue for the admissions functions. It is solely from the fees that are charged for the services and functions that are provided. My second reminder is that the, is that in order to address the structural deficit in the admissions fund, we have been exploring fee increases along with cost reductions. In May, we shared with the board two options for increases that were at that time circulating for public comment. The first option, option one, was a break-even approach. And the second option, option two, had more modest increases but would have resulted in what at that time was calculated as a remaining $4.5 million annual deficit in the admissions fund. So the board, when we presented those two options, the board strongly favored the break-even option, but recognized that in some instances, the increases were particularly steep and asked staff to peel back a little bit from option one in certain instances, sort of giving staff, asking staff to exercise their judgment to peel back where those increases were particularly steep, but otherwise to hew somewhat closely to option one. That revised version of the proposal for fee increases, which was then circulated for public comment, that was discussed at a high level with the board in July. We took some questions from you at the time for further exploration. And that is the proposal that is before you today, the one that we discussed in July. In August, the board adopted a cost-reduction approach that's related to the administration of the February bar exam, while staff continue to pursue further cost-reduction approaches for the July exam, but in addition to what was adopted in February. So let me turn it over to Ariselli to really set the stage for you on the condition of the fund. And then we can talk about the fee increase, and I'll give you a little roadmap of where we'll go for the rest of the item.
Great. So first off, good morning, Board of Trustees. I want to just quickly remind everyone about the financial condition of the admissions fund. For 2024, we had forecasted that we would have revenues of about $17.5 million and expenditures of $25.5 million. So that means that we are continuing to forecast the structural deficit for admissions of about $8.4 million. What's going to help in 2024 is the projected reserves that those finance committee members heard me yesterday is improving, improved by about $2 million. Our projected reserves are expected to end in 2023 with about a little bit over $6 million, which is up from the $4 million we had originally budgeted. And that is just the result of additional revenues from exam applicants in February and July. So with the proposal that's brought forth before you, we are anticipating proposed additional in- we are anticipating proposed additional, additional revenue to be about $7.9 million for 2024, so almost $8 million. I do want to really quickly remind the projected reserves that are better, the $6.2 million, we, for, at the end of, for 2023, I should say, we transferred all of the reserves from the legal specialization fund into the admissions fund to be able to fund the operations of the admissions fund in 2023. Without that, admissions would probably not have, would not have had enough reserves. So just something to keep in mind. Oh, wait. So this is another summary of where we anticipated with the fee increases, the admissions fund to be. So as I said in my previous slide, we were forecasting a deficit of about 4.8, $8.4 million, excuse me. And with the proposed fee increase of $7.9, well, that closes the gap a lot. And there will be reduction measures in the 2024 bar exam in February that would also add an additional 550, a little bit over half a million dollars. So that would put the admissions fund slightly, without touching reserves at all, slightly in, in black for 2024. And then, as you see here, we will look into more cost-cutting measures for the July bar exam, but those are still, those are still being determined. So with that, I'm going to pass it back to Donna.
So this proposal, this agenda item includes three separate components. First, the proposed fee increases that we were talking about adopting now, followed by a proposal for a policy going forward, addressing the frequency of reviewing the admissions fees for adjustment as appropriate. And then third, an update that we wanted to provide you following the action that was taken by the Board Executive Committee in August on the cost-reduction measures for February and what we're talking about on the cost-reduction measures for July and where we're headed with that. So the first item, as I mentioned, is looking at the proposed fee increases. And as I noted at the beginning, we have talked about this on several occasions with the board. It has gone out for public comment. I am prepared to talk about some or all of the fees in whatever depth the board would like. And I want to follow your lead because I do have resonating in my head right now a line that a former senator was famous for telling people that you had my vote until you started talking. So, so I would, so I'd like to generally follow your lead on this. We can go through the fees for law study and exams, special admissions, and the law schools. I know several of the trustees have questions in particular about the law school fees, the fees that are charged to law schools. And so we could jump to, ahead to that if that would be your preference.
All right. Any objections to that? I think that makes sense.
Jumping to the law school fees?
Yes.
Okay. So the agenda item includes fees, increased fees for change, for both the California accredited law schools, what we abbreviate as the CALs, California accredited law schools, as well as the unaccredited law schools. And these are fees associated with the periodic inspections that are conducted of those schools as we are the accreditor or regulator of those schools. And also the annual fee that accompanies the submission of their annual report. What I have on the screen here for you is, are the fees related to the CALs. Attachment A in your agenda item includes, on the third page, the fees that are related to both the CALs and the unaccredited schools. Focusing here on the fees that are related to the CALs because they do include some substantial increases that you've heard about in the public comment. And this is what you've got here. And the current proposal was the same as option one that we had talked about previously. The, so what you see here for the, the annual, the annual fee that accompanies the annual report is what is proposed is a fee increase of going from $2,170 to $22,900, which is a 955% increase. For the unaccredited schools, it is still a significant increase of just under 600%, going roughly from $1,090 to $7,500. So, so as you've heard from the law schools, the law schools have told us, look, we're not sitting on pots of money here. So if these increases are significant and the only way that we are going to be able to handle them is to pass those increases along to students. We, we were asked by the board at the July meeting to take a look at tuition increases. And you'll see in your attachment D in the agenda item, where we looked at increases in fees and tuition for the CALs and the unaccredited schools over the period from 2016 to 2022. We similarly looked at increases in the ABA law schools. And at Trustee Sol's suggestion, we looked at increases in the, in the CSU and the UC system as well. Obviously, what we are proposing here is a significant increase, much, a significantly higher increase than any of those increases that, that you have seen over time for, for the CALs. We are, as you all know, in a position where our, the fees are not, are not sufficient to meet the, the expenditures. We have been clear with the law schools for a number of years that the fee structure that's currently in place requires us to subsidize the cost and that that approach is not something that could continue indefinitely. I'm told that when the last fee increases went into place in 2018 for the law schools, it was communicated at that time that we wouldn't be able to continue to subsidize the schools and they should begin planning so that when the fees were reviewed again in five years, they would be prepared to assume the cost. I tell you, that is what I'm told. I don't see that language specifically in the agenda item that was presented to the board in 2018, but I did want to share that piece of information. Just sort of another fact that as I was putting together this agenda item, this PowerPoint, literally as I was putting it together, I got a pop-up on my phone identifying an increase that was, that the CSUs had, had adopted. I'm not wearing my distance glasses, and so I can't see exactly what that says. But I think it was over 5% to 6% increase over each of the next five years. That was something that was objected to understandably by the students. But that is something that, in order to yield $840 million, the CSU said, no, that's something that, that we do need to, need to implement. Just suggesting that we are not alone in needing to look at this. So following our discussion with the board, we took a look at, we took a look at the, the annual report fee, which, as I had mentioned, increased from $2,100 to $22,000 and said, is there, is there a better way we can, we can assess that? And so I put together a couple of options for how that might be tiered based on the size of the school. We do tier the fees that are charged to the unaccredited schools, but we didn't currently have a tiered structure in place for the accredited schools. So what you see is a tiering structure that looks at, at schools by size. The first two options, three tiers or four tiers, because there are two schools that are particularly large in comparison to the other schools. The third option, and you heard during your public comment, one of the deans talked about that third option, which says, let's just look at this per student because as the law schools have told us, they are going to need to pass these fees along to the students. If they do so, the question is, should students at a small school absorb a larger amount than students at a larger school? And so just looking at the math, the same way to achieve the total savings, the total revenue that we had proposed that we needed to, to achieve in order to, to meet our funding needs, you could divide that up across the number of students and say that's $90 per student. So regardless of the size of your school, $90 per student with the submission of the, of the, of the annual report. Now, there are other things that the board might want to consider. So this tiering structure, being that we came up with it after the July board meeting and are presenting it now, the board may wish to circulate that tiering structure for public comment separately and have, have schools weigh in on that. Another option that I looked at, as I mentioned to you, the fees for the unaccredited schools also went up significantly, 588% or so, but less than 955%. And so I did some quick math this morning and thought that, you know, in light of the unanticipated revenue bump, the $2 million that Ariselli mentioned, we received an unanticipated revenue this year, you know, the board could consider reducing the proposed fees that we are proposing for the CALs to the same percentage increase that we're proposing for the unaccredited schools. That would roughly, if we were looking at that flat number, reduce the fee not to, no longer be $22,900, but instead roughly just under $15,000. If you divide the, the amount that would yield by the number of students, that would be closer to $58, $59 per student as opposed to the 90. And so those are a couple of options that I wanted the, the board to, to be able to consider. I did want to highlight for you, since we did send this out for two public comment periods, and you have in the agenda item links to the online dashboards that include all of the comments. And the agenda item discusses sort of the number of comments that were received in various areas. But I did want to just highlight for you some of the themes of the public comment. As you'll see, the, the public commenters, with the first round of public comment, and this was, this was the, the first round was where, where we had option one and option two, were focusing on the financial burden of the fee increases on students, suggesting that we really need to find alternative ways to increase our revenue other than through law students. Things that were suggested included passing the fees along to licensed attorneys as opposed to applicants for the bar, significantly changing the structure of the bar exam, which you all know is something that we've proposed to the Supreme Court and is under consideration. Other changes like that, eliminating the moral character review to eliminate sort of costs and staffing needs. Suggestions that related to the fact that out-of-state attorneys, since we don't have reciprocity with any other state, they have to sit for the bar, bar exam. And not only do they have to sit for the bar exam, but we charge them more when many of them only have to sit for one day of the bar exam. And then there were just some calls for feeling like the, the public commenters didn't have enough information about the admissions budget and to, in order to, to say that increasing fees was the right way to go in lieu of other options. Second round of public comment, the proposal that you have before you today. The comments were not all that, the themes of the comments were not particularly different. I think, right, as we all know, we are not expecting full embrace or much of any embrace of a proposal to increase fees, whether significantly or otherwise. So again, we were hearing about the, that the increases or even the existing fees are too high, whether that be the fees for the, the fees that we're charging or the fees in comparison with, you know, we've got a lot of comments that talked about increases and what it takes to, cost to go to law school, increased bar preparation fees, the increases in, you know, groceries and rent due to, due to the, the current state of the economy. And then on top of that, people couldn't afford these additional increases and thought that they were unwarranted and unfair. And one of the other items that I wanted to point out in particular were those comments that talked about the fee increases being inconsistent or antithetical to our goal of increasing diversity in the profession and that the increases would have a disproportionate effect on those who were socio-economically disadvantaged, would result in less diversity in the profession because more diverse individuals would not be able to afford these increases and would in fact, as a result, not be able to go to law school, not be able to, to sit for the bar exam and would have that detrimental effect antithetical to our strategic plan goals. So, so that's, that's where we are on the, on the proposal and the fees. I think maybe before we get into the policy for revision or talking about cost-reduction measures, this would be a good time to take your questions and, and, and then proceed from there.
All right. Trustees, any questions? Yes, Trustee Buena Ventura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me ask you about the $2 million that we have in, in revenue. If we were not going to use it to supplement or reduce the fee, where else would that money go, the $2 million?
So, so what we are looking at now is we're projecting, we've got six point, we're looking at having $6.2 million in reserves. Our 17% minimum floor of reserves would be $4.4 million. So you're talking about having a little bit over, over that floor. And there's a lot of activity going on right now in the Office of Admissions. We have pending before the Supreme Court a proposal from the Blue Ribbon Commission to develop a brand-new Califor, California-specific bar exam. Exam development is not a cheap proposal. And so being able to have the, the reserves and have that, have a little bit more in the reserves will, will greatly assist us in being able to, to, to conduct the, the development and the administration of a new bar exam.
And then I'm assuming that in using your, your metrics of, your theory is when you broke down in terms of the law schools, the bigger the law schools, maybe you're, you're thinking the more that they can pay. But I, I'm not familiar with, do we have, are there law schools with bigger treasury even though they have smaller number of students?
So I did not look at the individual finances of the law schools. Following sort of their comments that they would be passing these fees along to the law schools, the tier, the fees along to the law students, I apologize. The tiers are based on the number of law students. So the larger the law school, the more students you have to pass it on to. Therefore, it would be, they would be able to handle the higher fee. And in fact, it would be for most of them lesser, it would cost each individual law student less than the law students at the, at the smaller schools that have the, the overall lower price.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add on the $2 million or $1.8 million that as we discussed, I believe, yesterday, there is a lot of variability on the admissions revenue side. So another use for it may be if the 2024 revenue projections actually fall short of what is currently budgeted because there's not as many test takers or for other reasons. So it's not just solely potentially to fund new initiatives. Although under that new initiative header, I would categorize the portfolio-based exam pathway that you discussed yesterday. Should the board send that forward and the Supreme Court authorize that, that's another area where we would need to make an investment. But in addition to new initiatives, it's just important for the board to, to understand there is a lot of variability in the revenue that comes into admissions.
And probably one other thing to add. As you all know, we have a multi-year MOU with, with our bargaining units, with our staff, that include cost of living adjustments. As I mentioned at the, at the lead-in to this, the cost for all of the admissions operations, including, including the employee compensation, come from these admissions fees. So to the extent that we've got a cost of living adjustment scheduled for 2025, that would also have to come out of these fees. And so that's not something that's included in sort of these projections. So that's something that, that, a way that some of that funding would have to be used as well.
Right. Seeing no other questions. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a few more. Trustees, so well.
Clearly, this is a, an issue area that has gotten an awful lot of attention, both in the, in the public comments that, that we've received as well as, I, I know that we received a, a, a letter from at least one state senator relative, relative to, to this issue. Clearly, a 995% increase is, that's a lot to absorb. Clearly, a nine hundred and ninety-five percent increase is, that's a lot to absorb in, in, in one year and a lot to pass on to, to students. In my, in my day job, one of the, one of the areas that's sort of a pillar of the work that my nonprofit does is around student loan debt. And my fear is, is that as a, as a part of this, and I know that some of it is going to be necessary, but as a part of that, you're working to be asking students to take out a lot more in the way of student loan debt. And on the back end of that, that may be, in some respects, discouraging for certain, for certain students to, to go into, oh, you know, legal aid or, or other sort of parts of the law where, you know, we really could use their, their assistance, their service and, and their dedication. Because they, they may make choices that would allow them to sort of pay off their loans sooner or however the decision-making process might work. Couple of questions for me. One is, I know that the admissions fee or that this, this area is supposed to be self-sufficient. And the general fund, I know we have used previously sometimes to subsidize the admissions, admissions fund. In the, in the fees that are charged for licensees, are there any opportunities for existing lawyers to opt into? You know, is there a category or line item that might help going forward, those that, that are, might be prospective lawyers?
So the current licensee fee does not cover those who are seeking admission to practice law. We have talked with legislative staff about the possibility of including a fee that, a part of the fee that would be designated for those purposes. And we were told that that would render the, the fee a tax and would be, would make it significantly more difficult to move that through the legislature and to have that, have a fee attached to licensees for that. The, there is always an option to add on to a voluntary, you know, opt-in, you know, to the lawyers to ask if they are interested in supporting, the, supporting those who are having more difficulty, right, to be able to support the admissions fund so that we can reduce the fees. There is always this tension, I'd say. We receive over six million dollars in funding through this, through voluntary contributions for legal services. And there's, there's always a question in people's minds of where's the tipping point? Where, when I add one more fee, does it cut into the revenue that comes in for legal services or others? I don't profess to have, have any idea where that, where that is, but that has certainly been a tension in the past when we've talked about additional voluntary contributions.
Got it. I'm gonna let Mr. Tony probably speak to this since he brought it up yesterday. But I, we've been talking about two million dollars in additional revenue, but, but essentially we have a reserve of six point two million dollars that's, that's here. And, you know, notwithstanding what our current reserve policy is, we could go, go below the seventeen percent to, to try to defray and offset some of these, some of these increases. I'll let others probably speak to that a little, in a little bit more detail. But I would just say that I would be in favor of us, given the fact that this tiered approach is not, not something that there's been some kind of a comment on, allowing for some of that public comment to take place around this, this tiered approach with the notion of, of us using some of the reserves to, to try to offset the, the nature of, and the, the dramatic sort of increases that, that the proposal currently right now is offering us.
Thank you. I like the, first of all, you know, just for context, we find ourselves in this position because of, you know, we have to take responsibility as a Board of Trustees for the position we find ourselves in with the admissions fees being artificially low. Most of these fees, in fact, all of them, for the most part, have not been adjusted since 2016 and some before. So I think that when you go for year after year without adjusting fees, then, you know, one day you have to pay the piper. And that, that's where we find ourselves in. This is not the fault of the students or the institutions, you know, the law schools and stuff. This is our fault as a Board of Trustees. So that's the first thing. I, I, you know, I think, and I'm, you know, you know, just want to make sure that at least from my point of view, we have to take responsibility for this because once you take responsibility, it, it permits you to, in the future, not make the same mistake and not wait for, you know, a, a financial crisis to force us to take a look, but to do this on a routine basis. So that, that, that's part and parcel and included in this proposal. And so I think that's a step forward. One of the things, and I have been a proponent, I'm, I'm going to be very clear. I have been a proponent of large enough increases to meet what I understand is actually our obligation for the admissions fund to be self-financing, that it is not an area that is supposed to be funded through licensee fees. Okay, this is not supposed to be a fee increase issue. That's my understanding. And so that's why I have been an advocate for making the hard choice to raise this. What I like is the responsiveness of the staff to real concerns expressed by the law schools at the magnitude of their increases and giving us some other options to look at. I, I tell you, you know, just on the face of it, the number, option number three, the idea that maybe we should have the fee be tied to and be proportional to the number of students per capita because we know these are going to be passed through. We didn't need them to tell us that. That is how it works. They, you know, their revenue is coming from students. Guess what? If we raise their accreditation fees, that's where they have to go. And so there is something attractive to me about saying, gosh, ninety dollars for each student is, feels a little bit more fair than, you know, a range of two eighty-three to seventy or one seventy to fifty-three, depending on size, with the penalties going to the smallest schools, okay? The biggest penalties. I agree with the suggestion that we put this back out to comment because it also gives us as a board a little bit more time to sharpen our pencils and look at the two questions that were brought up, the two variables. One variable is that the admissions revenue is running higher than expected. And this is the old revenues, you know, the old fees. So, you know, you know, do we actually, you know, can, can we find a little room for some of these fees? The second point being that, you know, Trustee Sewell brought up the, you know, issue of the reserve. And we don't want to be perceived of funding our reserve when, you know, the impact is so high on people. So, and, and, you know, these are, you know, students before they're earning, okay? I feel much more sympathetic to students, you know, than, than attorneys who are earning money in their profession. They're not doing that yet. So I, I, I feel more for students, to be honest. And so we have this reserve and this seventeen percent, it's a guideline. We can call it a policy when, when we want to. But it, you know, there are no consequences. So it's, you know, it's a guideline, you know? So we should think about that. And the third thing it gives us time to think about is, is there any scenario in which we could maybe have a two-tier raise where we have part of the raise one year and part of the raise the next year? You know, there is tremendous sticker shock. I've, I've read all the comments on this one, okay? Many, many comments. And there's a big sticker shock particularly from students. I'm talking about all the admission fees, not just this particular one. And so I would be in support of returning to this agenda item in November, asking the staff to, you know, give us a couple more scenarios to say, you know, gosh, you know, maybe we can do this, maybe we can do that to at least dull a little bit of the pain. There will be pain no matter what, but can we dull a little bit of it? Thank you.
So just, just a timing issue. Happy to do all of that. So one of the reasons that we are here today at the September meeting with this, we're looking to increase the fees for 2024. For the February 2024 bar exam, if we're going to increase those fees, that would have to be done at this meeting. We open registration for the February bar exam on October 1. So, so if, if this, right, so if the board still wants to increase that, that fee for February 24, that would, that part would need to be done now. For the other fees, coming back in November would not impact our ability to put them in place fully for 2024.
Thank you for that clarification. It wasn't aware, but thank you. That, that makes sense, too.
Trustee Trail.
I gotta say that this is one piece that I really enjoyed discussing with some of the other trustees because I think that I'm changing my mind and I'm, and I feel like I'm learning something as I've been discussing this more publicly with, with people. I think that there, there was one comment that is, might even be up there. The idea that maybe these fees get phased in over time. We're talking about what to do with our reserve fund, how to, how to, how to work with it. I think that you have a reserve fund. I love the, the discipline of having one for situations just like this, right? When you are in a bind and you have to figure out some creative ways to use funds, you know? How we get that money out of there? I mean, I think, I don't mind going under that reserve number if we accommodate through a loan or whatever. You know, these, all these metrics that we could use, these financial instruments we could use. But it's for a rainy day and it's raining, right? Like, that's why we have these funds and that's why we should replenish them when available. I think that if the fees issue, I, I do agree that it's, we can't pay for all our sins all at once. That, that takes, you know, fiscal management that is different than what we've been doing traditionally. And there is no reason why students or one individual group should take the burden of that whole thing. I think we all should, right? It just, it shouldn't just be disproportionately hitting one, one, one organism, one group. So I appreciate the idea of evaluating creative ways to use our reserve funds and how we self-help to soften the blow of some of these very serious demands that we have on our own infrastructure here at the bar. And, and I think that we need to be healthy and we need to be able to provide service that people can depend on and rely on. There is a customer servicing that I think we'd ultimately like to be holding ourselves to. And so I'm just sensitive to all your comments and I appreciate that. And I think that, I appreciate the, the conversations I've had with the trustees and just how to be creative with what we've got. So, thank you.
Yeah, if I could just say, and, and maybe Ariselli would chime in, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't urge the board not to just put this entire item off. I, I think we've come many times here and I, I don't think it would be prudent for us to not move on some of these fees. The significant concern seems to be around the COWs fees. And I think as Donna indicated, we did not put the tiered pricing option itself out for public comment previously. I think it makes sense to do that. I also think we can take direction from the board as to how to use a portion of the unanticipated additional revenue to offset those fees when we bring the proposal back to the board. And, and I, so I, I would encourage or ask the board to consider moving forward on the rest of the fees, but holding that one aside and directing us to do more work on it. So that would be sort of what I'd say. And I don't know, Ariselli, if you have anything you'd like to say.
Yeah, I know, and I, I would just say, you know, we're going to be working on our 2024 budget any day now. And, you know, we do need to be able to budget where we think admissions is going to be and without knowing whether the fees are going to be increased or not. That would, that would be difficult to predict. Also, you know, a reminder again that I said in, in the earlier slides, admissions has a good reserve, not just because of those two million dollars that we got from additional student sitting, but also because we did transfer all of the reserves, right, from another fund for 2023. Without that, we, we'd be negative, right?
But I think we're, we're, right now, we're just looking at the accounts as they are. But that's, it's, it's super important. It's not a, that, that fund got bailed out, too, which is why there's money in there, right? So we were, it's, it's totally duly noted, for sure.
It's one time, that bailout money is one time, it's gone.
All right. Yes, Trustee Chen.
I think especially in light of the public comment, I would, you know, and I understand we need to vote on this today, but in future iterations, I would urge us to really be waiting a lot of these increases on the attorney special admissions. I think that they're, you know, the revised fee proposals rolled back some of the prior proposals quite drastically in ways that I question whether that's necessary. And those could be places where you absorb a lot of that, a lot of that increase. I mean, for example, rolling back the out-of-state attorney arbitration council fee from five hundred to fifty from the original proposal. I, you know, I think that some of the, some of the measures we're talking about now with the phasing in could be absorbed by increasing those amounts.
So I'm.
Or am I looking at the wrong document?
So we were, there were a couple of changes back and forth because the pro hoc vice and out-of-state attorney arbitration council, do you need to go to the Supreme Court? Because those, those are in rule of court, which we were going to come back in November with a rule. We were, and I apologize if, if the chart didn't get correctly updated. But we were requesting that the board adopt that five hundred dollar amount. It just couldn't go into effect until after we bring that request to the, to the court to change the rule of court.
None of those got, none of those got rolled back. Foreign legal consultants at a thousand.
Yeah, everything in there was option one that went out originally. Everything on the special admissions.
Okay, I see. I'm looking at the wrong column. Okay.
All right. Any other questions or can I get the resolution? Are, are we to that point?
Almost.
Almost, okay.
There's one more point before a resolution and then we can talk about the other pieces. And that point, back to the, is, is a policy for, how'd that happen? For the review, there, nope. One more. There you go. For the future review of fees, you'll see that what we are proposing is, except for the caveat in the third bullet, oh, fourth bullet, consistent with what was proposed for the other general fund fees, that we have a policy to review it every three years. And in the intervening years, we would increase the fees by the CPI. The caveat here is we are working on some further cost reduction measures. And so, and so on the, the, what I hope to be good chance that a CPI increase, at least for certain fees, may not be necessary in the intervening years. We'd like the opportunity for staff to be able to. We'd like the opportunity for staff to be able to, to demonstrate that to the board and have the board not impose that CPI increase on some of the fees if we have been able to adopt some cost reduction measures. So those were the things that would be involved in the resolution. I just had some status updates on the administration of the February and July exam if we wanted to go to a resolution now. Let's see, we've got three versions of the resolution. Let's bring up version, revised version two. I think it'll still need some adjusting here, but. So, so this version of the resolution has the board approving all of the fees that are proposed with the exception of the fees related to the COWs and directing that the fees related to the COWs, the tiered structure, go out for public comment. And then that second bullet is the one that I think probably needs further revision. It was suggesting that in what we send out for public comment, it includes a, a reduction, it encompasses a reduction in the, in the fee, consistent with what we had talked about if we were to limit it to the same level of increase as the unaccredited. I didn't hear buy-in from the board at that level, but what I did hear you saying, I think would be that that second bullet would read, resolve, further resolve that the Board of Trustees direct staff to adjust the proposed fees related to California accredited law schools downward and to adjust the options set forth in attach, in option, attachment B accordingly, right? Without, without sort of telling us exactly how far down to adjust. That's what I think I've heard from you all. I just don't want anybody thinking we're increasing them.
All right. That is the resolution. Are there any questions or comments before, well, do I have a, a motion on the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, but first by trustee Buena Ventura, second by trustee Chen. Is there any further questions or comments before we get to the vote? Yes, trustee Sewell.
I just want to make sure, in the, in the vote that we're about to take, does that also include the, the reductions? Are those associated with this?
It includes reduction for the fees that are, that are proposed for the COWs.
Understood, but I, I guess maybe I'm thinking about the admissions fund in general in terms of how it was laid out, in terms of we have, you know, a deficit of 8.4 million, we have the, but there was also $550,000, I think, in there of, of cost reductions? Is that right? Is that, are we voting on that with this, with this resolution?
The board already took action when you approved the configuration of the February 2024 exam. That was a whole discussion we had about the number of sites consolidating the sites. That is what's going to result in the realization of the 550,000. So you've already taken that action. We don't need to vote on it today.
I was doing executive committee?
Oh, it was executive committee, yeah.
No.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember if it was executive committee or the board.
I'm just trying to make sure, I'm just, just trying to track, was that executive committee yesterday?
No, that was the conversation where trustee Knoll wanted us to look at San Diego.
I wasn't at, I wasn't at that meeting. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Can I, can I just make a small observation on attachment B before it goes out for circulation? Could we please reformat it so that all three options show up on one page? I just, like, I feel like option three could very easily get missed if it's, you know, just a teeny line on a separate page.
Of course.
Great.
All right. If no other comments, I take the roll, please.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby? Shelby stepped down. Sewell?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Nine i's, zero n's, motion carries.
So if I could just give those updates, no need to put up the slides. We just wanted to follow up, actually starting at where we just left off, trustee Sewell, with the action that was taken by the executive committee on August the 10th. The executive, what we had proposed was a reduction in the number of locations, testing sites for the February 2024 exam. We presented seven sites as the, as the proposal. One of those, one of those sites being Ontario, none of those sites being San Diego. At the executive committee meeting, there was, there was a strong request for us to reevaluate whether, in fact, there was the ability to replace the Ontario site with the San Diego site, with a site in San Diego. We, we originally picked the San Diego site because we, we did not, we were not aware of a San Diego site that would be able to accommodate the same numbers. So we went back following that direction of the, of the executive committee. We checked with, we Googled sites. We checked with every site that we had previously used or that's been on our list. We reached out to former trustee Knoll and asked him if he had suggestions. I reached out to deans of four law schools in the San Diego area, asked for suggestions, assistance, contacts that they may have. Ultimately, the site that, that I think would be able to accommodate the numbers is, was unavailable for February. And we had, we had known that initially, that that site was unavailable. We looked at casinos, we looked at, at a variety of things. We could not find a site that was, that would hold more than 500 to 700 people and we were looking for a site for at least 1,500. So what the executive committee had directed was that we do that exploration, we present the results of that exploration to the board chair and the executive director, and they would get, they would decide at that point if we contract with Ontario or a site in San Diego. Following the presentation of all of that information to the executive director and the chair, they directed us to contract with the Ontario site. And so we do not have a San Diego site for, for February. I actually have a call that was initiated by USD Law School next week to talk about sort of future options and how they might be able to help in finding some spaces. They were one of the schools I reached out to in, in July, following the, in August, following the board, the executive committee meeting. And so I'm, they actually coordinated several schools on the call and we're all going to sort of figure out if we can, if we can come up with something that would give us enough seats in San Diego for future. So that's February. For the July exam, what we are looking at, and the reason that we only took action with regard to this reduced sites in February and not for all of 2024, was, is that we are looking at the ability to make part of the exam remote in July 2024. Currently, we would be, we are not permitted to have the multiple choice or the MBE section remote. We have, we conduct those in test, our test locations across the state, but we are looking at whether we can administer the exam remotely in a way that makes it equally accessible to all applicants. We are looking also at whether it would be, it would save us money if instead of the test sites for the, if we can't go fully remote, if we can use established test centers that exist up and down the state and that would have, that, and frankly, exist in other states and other countries, that would allow people, they would still have to come to California, to our test sites to take the multiple choice, but could then take, take the essay and the performance test at one of these test centers closer to their home or, or remotely. So we're exploring a, a number of options. We're talking to other states. We are talking to, we are talking to vendors of remote technology. We are talking to vendors of body worn cameras. We are, we are looking at everything that we can think of. We're talking to, to IHSS to see about using that work, work pool for in-home proctors, for people who's, who have accommodations that don't lend themselves to being on camera the entire time. So we are exploring all of these different options. We will come back to you in November and give you an update on where we are, what information we have received, potential cost estimates or cost savings as a result. I expect that we won't be able to give you the final, we won't be able to do, complete all of the research and have, we're having a forum for those who need testing accommodations to also sort of get their ideas and explore those. So we won't be able to have everything nailed down 100% in November, so we expect it'll take us to the January meeting and to come back with the final proposal and the final determination of whether we can go remote, use these test centers, or need to continue applying the approach that we did for, for the February 2024 exam with the reduced test sites. So you'll be hearing more from us at the next two board meetings on that.
All right, thank you. Thank you for all your work in that. It's a massive undertaking, for sure. All right, we are going to take a quick recess for lunch. So for anybody who is observing, we will be back at 12:50 to take on the rest of our agenda. So we'll see you on the other side.
Are we still doing the?
All right. Welcome back to the Board of Trustees meeting. We are going to resume, take this out of order, item 704. This is the proposed amendments to rules 9.11 and 9.90 of the California Rules of Court. It's a return from public comment. This is an update on our conflict of interest code. And here we have General Counsel, Ms. Deftian, and several, several other presenters. So welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have on my staff Shelby King and Robert Retana who'll be presenting. If we could advance Shelby first, she there? And just to provide a, you know, set the, set the background on this, this is an item that you've heard about in, at the July meeting, at the direction of the California Supreme Court. We revised the rules pertaining to the appointments of state bar court judges, as well as the Board of Trustees that are appointed by the, by the California Supreme Court. Those rules went out to public comment and they're back. And with that, let me turn that over to Shelby King, who is an attorney within OGC, and she will provide a brief overview, and there is a resolution for the board's consideration and action.
Actually, Eileen, we had divided it up a little bit differently, so if you don't mind, I will start out. Robert Retana, I'm the Deputy General Counsel for the State Bar. I'm here with Shelby King, who's Assistant General Counsel. I was just going to give a, a brief update on the conflict of interest code for the Board of Trustees. Eileen has already given part of that. And then I'll just update you on that quickly and then turn it over to Shelby, who will walk you through the proposed amendments to the Rules of Court. As Eileen mentioned, we did bring the proposed amended conflict of interest code for the Board of Trustees to the board for its approval in July. We submitted them to the Supreme Court of California, who responded on August 31st with some additional amendments. The court directed us to send those amendments out for public comment for 30 days and to get back to the court with a resubmission by October 30th. So the, the public comment period will close on October 5th. After that time, after public comment is reviewed, we will schedule a meeting of the board to seek its approval of the amended conflict of interest code for the board. There may be additional revisions beyond what the Supreme Court has provided us in light of public comment and also to incorporate the amendments to Business and Professions Code, Section 6036, which is part of the pending fee bill. So that's the update. I want to apologize to the board, there was a problem with one of the links in this section of the memo, the link to the revisions that we received from the California Supreme Court, actually linked to a different document, but those amendments are still available. If you follow the other link to the public comment page, the letter from the court and supporting materials are contained on that page. So if you want to actually see and review them, you, you could follow the other link. I apologize for the technical difficulties. And when, we're not asking the board to take any action at this point, it's just an update. But when we do come back to you for your approval, we'll of course provide you with all the appropriate materials and we'll double check the link and make sure that you have everything you need. So are there any questions on this part of it?
All right. Mr. Tony, is that a hand? Got it. Okay. All right. Questions here, so go ahead, Mr. Retana.
Okay, so Shelby can take over?
Yes, so this item also regards amendments to Rules of Court 9.11 and 9.90 that would require the applicant evaluation and nomination committee, the AENC, and the trustees nominating committee, the TNC, to consider conflicts of interest when evaluating applicants for state bar court and the Board of Trustees. This item was first presented at the board, July board meeting, and we are returning from public comment. So as background, the Supreme Court asked the state bar in March to amend these Rules of Court on an expedited basis. Two amendments were made to both rules. The First Amendment would require the committees to develop procedures to evaluate applicants who are selected to be interviewed for actual and potential conflicts of interest. This includes financial and non-financial conflicts. The Second Amendment directs applicants selected for interviews to confidentially disclose information, required information about any conflicts of interest. It also directs the committees to consider this information in their evaluations. The amendments were proposed at the July meeting and circulated for public comment for 45 days. The goal is to have the rules amended before the next application review processes begin in late 2023 or early 2024. We received only five public comments. After reviewing those comments, staff concluded that the proposed rules did not require any further amendment. Therefore, we recommend that the board approves the, the amendments, direct staff to send the amendments to the Supreme Court for their approval, and direct staff to request that the other appointing authorities for the board consider adopting similar procedures to evaluate conflicts of interest. And we're happy to address any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. King and Mr. Retana. Any questions? Mr. Tony?
Would you please review the definition of conflicts of interest and tell us what page to be looking at for that, please?
I don't believe that the rule, conflicts of interest, the term, is defined in the rules, but part of the rules requests that the TNC and the AENC define what information will be collected on conflicts of interest. Initially, an early version of our rule amendments included information that should be collected by the AENC and TNC in their evaluations, but the Office of the Chief Justice indicated that the details should be worked out by the committees in developing their implementing procedures that will be later approved by the Supreme Court. And so that's why there may not be a, a specific definition of what conflict of interest means in those amendments.
And, and if I may add to that, thank you, Shelby. There is a discussion, trustee Tony, on page five, that outlines some categories of information that is anticipated to be included in those procedures. There was, those would include financial interests that are required to be reported on your Form 700 under the updated code, information about relationships with licensees that would be required to be reported on the questionnaire 2201, information about compensated and non-compensated memberships on the board, professional associations, et cetera, information about business relationship, information about past employment and volunteer positions, and et cetera. So there is going to be a more detailed category of information that would be considered as part of those procedural updates to be provided by the candidates.
My comment is, it, it's strange to have My comment is, it, it's strange to have a, a policy that says that conflicts of interest must be vetted without having a definition or knowing what are we, what's the, you know, kind of like, what's the guideline here?
Guideline would be the actual laws that apply to, to the conflict of interest analysis. So you've got the Political Reform Act that dictates the financial interests that are involved, and then obviously, the 6036B that was, you know, is, is on its way to be amended to capture the common law conflict of interest. And then it goes beyond that to ask about relationships, it captures our 2201 program rules, and, you know, any other potential personal interests that may come into play.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that question. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I want to thank staff for your work on this. I know that we have a resolution. If we could place that on the projector? All right, any questions about the resolution before I ask for a motion? All right, seeing no questions, may I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, first by Trustee Chen, second by Trustee Buena Ventura. May I get the roll call, please?
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Ten Is, Zero Nays, Motion Carries.
All right, thank you, and this is, again, an important step that we are taking to increase accountability, transparency, and to ensure that, that the decisions that are made are done with the absolutes, are made with absolute highest standards. So thank you to staff, thank you to OGC for continuing to push us in that right direction. Let me go back to Item 703. This is approval of the 2023 Midyear Budget Variance Report. And we have Ms. Montoya Chica. Welcome back.
Okay, yes, so this is, I'll be covering this, the Midyear Budget Variance Report and the results of the quarter two financial statements and projections for 2023. The Finance Committee members will be very familiar with this, this is what I covered. So I'll first start off with the results of our quarter two financials. I'll go first through the revenue, followed by the expenses. So as you can see here, the revenues, our operating revenues bar wide were slightly below budget by about a million dollars. All of the funds below is the makeup of that variance, and I'm only gonna highlight those funds that have significant variances, otherwise, most of the other funds are pretty in line with our revenue budget. The General Fund is slightly above budget by about $3 million, and that's really just due to mandatory fees, as we got more licensee payments than we had expected, as well as other fees, which are late compliance fees that we earned from implementing the CTAP program earlier this year, as well as some past through insurance commissions. We got the money, but we were not able to disperse it until Q3, so there's a little bit of revenue still sitting there at the end of Q2. The Equal Access Fund is below budget by about $7 million, and that's really just due to a delaying receipt of the grant revenues. The granting comes from, obviously, the grand tour, and, and sometimes there are delays from when we expected it to come, to come in. The Admissions Fund, as I had mentioned, is above budget as of Q2 by about 1.6 million. This is really just, as, as I had mentioned in my previous, in a previous agenda item, just more applicants sitting for the July and, and February and July bar exams. And finally, the other funds, just slightly above budget by close to 700,000, and that's just more revenues that we got from, in the Justice, Justice Gap Fund from settlement donations. Now moving on to the expenses, bar wide expenses, we are above budget by close to $4 million at 3.8. And I'll go first into the General Fund. We are above budget in the General Fund as of the end of Q2 by about $3 million, and that's really just due to personnel expenses and some equipment expenditures there. Similarly, in the Equal Access Fund, it's slightly above budget, just because the Office of Access and Inclusion usually does, we work with them to, to allocate what the budget is going to be based on the expenditures or dispersments to the sub recipients. So they had a little bit of grand dispersments ahead of the planned schedule. The Admissions Fund, also slightly below budget by close to $1 million, and that's just due, where am I, just, just due to lower than expected professional services, and a little bit less of exam, exam costs in the, in the July bar exam. And then finally, the Client Security Fund, that's also below budget, also close to $1 million at 800,000. And that's really just the level of claims in the case inventory are deemed ineligible for payment, but for the next two quarters, it is expected that we are gonna do, have higher payouts in the Client Security Fund. So this slide here, as of, as of the six months, we always do midyear projections, and we adjust revenues or expenses as needed, whether up or down, or, or none at all, depending. And we project where we think all the funds are gonna end in terms of their reserve levels. And this is where we think all of the funds are gonna end in terms of their reserve levels. I will remind, a reminder of the target policy that the Board has, which is that most funds should be between 17 and 30%. Those, they're, the ones that are listed as NA there are grant-related funds, and those are excluded from the reserve policy. And then in addition to that is the Client Security Fund, that's also exempt from that policy. So I'll cover a few of the funds in this projection in this slide. First, the General Fund, hopefully, the reserve number there is familiar to this Board, as we, as you approved an amendment in August to increase the spending on the budget, and that brought our reserve down to about 400,000, just under half a million. And that was to account for actual, actual personnel spending, the six months of building operations that we had in budgeted. It also increased in some professional services that were unknown at the time of budget adoption. So like the early time settlement in May report, and such, such a professional expenditures we had to incur. I'm gonna move on to the Admissions Fund, that we also briefly covered in the Admissions item. So we had it budgeted a deficit of 4.7, sorry, a deficit of 7 million, and it's now down to 4.7 million. And that's really just the result of those two, almost $2 million revenues that we are projecting to be above due to the exams from, exam fees. So that means that the ending reserve is, instead of 4 million that we had budgeted, is now up to about 6.2 million. The Lawyers Assistant Program is one of the funds that is above the 30% ceiling of the reserve policy, it's at about 44%. However, this is one of the funds that we have designated to support the General Fund, and we plan on transferring about half a million dollars of the reserves. Similarly, the Client Security Fund is another of the funds that we are designating to transfer almost eight point, about 8.2 million dollars of its reserves to support the General Fund operations for 2024. And the last attachment in this agenda that was posted is Attachment D, which is the actual midyear budget to variance analysis report. We do an analysis and explain any, any variances plus or minus 100,000 at the cost center item level. I won't go into the details, there's a lot, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has on, on that Attachment D. Otherwise, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
There is a resolution.
There is?
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, first by Soell, second by Trejo. Can I get the resolution, please? We'll take roll. All right, any questions or comments before we take the roll call though? Right, seeing none?
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Ten Is, Zero Nays, Motion Carries.
All right, thank you so much. All right, going back to our final item on open session agenda, that's the item we pulled off in consent, that's 50-1, and I believe that we have a resolution? All right, any further presentation needed on this item?
No, but just for clarifications, Chair, the item that is not gonna be approved and is pulled from this is contract number, give me one second, it is 13 on that list, so that will not be voted on. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
All right, I think that's crystal clear now? All right, may I have a motion?
Don't move.
I'll second.
All right, first by Trustee Shelby, second by Trustee Soell. Any questions or comments before we take the roll call? All right, seeing none?
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser? Shelby?
Aye.
Soell? Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Ten Is, Zero Nays, sorry, Motion Carries.
All right, thank you, everyone. Right, just conferring with staff here, no other items in open session, correct? All right, this concludes the open session items for the State Bar Board of Trustees. We will now go into closed session pursuant to the following Government Code sections. Government Code Section, this relates to 7002, Government Code Section 11126, Sub A, Sub 1, and 112, excuse me, 11126, Sub C, Sub 2. Then Item 703, this is closed pursuant to Government Code Section 11126, Sub E, Sub 2, Sub A. And I would anticipate that these items will take approximately, what do you think, 15 minutes?
Maybe 30.
30? So we anticipate coming back out of closed at approximately 1:50 PM. Welcome back to the open session meeting for the Board of Trustees. We are out of closed session, and there is nothing to report, so I will adjourn the September 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting. Thank you.